Maybe you don't know, Commissioner Ramey won't be here tonight. He's absent, everything's okay, but he won't be here. And also Commissioner Taylor is not going to be here, so there's five of us. So with that, I'm gonna... I've got the script here, I'm gonna go ahead and get started, call the meeting to order. I want to say good evening and welcome to... Welcome to everybody to the March 9th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting. Thank you for joining us in this remote meeting format we're using in response to Governor Brown's "Stay Home and Save Lives" order. This format enables the Planning Commission to meet here from the community, take care of our business while keeping members, staff, and the public safe. Today, our meeting will begin with public comment and then will be followed by a work session on the Middle Housing Code Amendment Project. There are several housekeeping announcements and instructions related to the meeting format I need to take care of as we get started. Thank you for your patience while I work my way through them. Anyone wishing to access the meeting can do so by watching livestream available on our website, broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following access instructions that are listed on the agenda for the meeting. For those who join the meeting via computer device or phone, your microphone, webcam, and phone are automatically muted when you enter the meeting as an attendee. If you wish to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting, you haven't already done so, please raise your virtual hand now to join the speakers queue in one of two ways. For those viewing the meeting on a laptop, computer, or another device, click once on the blue hand icon. And for those listening to the meeting on a phone, press star nine. When the public comment begins, our meeting moderator will announce the next two speakers at a time. When it's your turn, the moderator will announce your name and unmute your microphone. Public comment is limited to 10 minutes. Your time to speak will be based on the number of people that have signed up to speak. And finally, I want to thank everyone again for their patience, flexibility, for good humor as we work through or work within this virtual meeting format. As always, feel free to contact the staff if there is testimony you were not able to provide or if you wish to get or that you might wish to get to us in a different manner. So we'll move to the agenda. Agenda item A is public comment. Couple of additional comments about that too. As we get started, the public comment is an opportunity for individuals to speak with the Planning Commission on any topics except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record is already closed. Planning Commission reserves 10 minutes beginning of this meeting for public comment. Generally, the time limit for public comment is three minutes. However, the Planning Commission reserves the option to reduce the time allowed each speaker based on the number of people who are requesting to speak. As a reminder, your hand needs to be raised to be in the queue for public comment. So I think I want to do now is just ask staff if there are... Do we have any members of the public who are wanting to provide public comment?
There are no hands up.
Okay, okay. So I think what I'll do now is we'll move to Agenda Item B, which is our work session. And it's on Middle Housing Code Amendments, the update. And I'm going to turn it over to Teri Hardy.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson, and welcome Commissioners. I want to also welcome Isis, who's a member of our Middle Housing Equity Roundtable. Welcome, Isis. Isis and Tanya will be giving some comments after we hear the public outreach summary portion of the agenda. And that's the first part that I'm going to share with you. So I'm going to start sharing my screen. Make sure I pick the right one. Okay. Just a couple of introductory slides here before we get to the meat of everything. So today, we'll remind you about the overall goals and status of the middle housing project, summarize themes from our February outreach, and then cover the results of the economic feasibility analysis with our guest Tyler Baum. And then we'll talk about how project staff are thinking about writing the middle housing code, and we'll have Matt Hasty joining us for that piece. And we'll wrap up with next. As a reminder, the overall goals of the middle housing project are to comply with the House Bill, first and foremost, to further ongoing work aimed at addressing equity and affordability, and to enable more production of diverse types of housing across Eugene. In 2019, House Bill 2001 was passed by the Oregon Legislature requiring cities to allow more types of housing in more places. As you know by now, cities must allow duplexes to be built on each lot. Triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters, and townhouses must be allowed in residential zones that allow detached, single-dwelling, according to state administrative rules that were adopted in December 2020. Many of the rules tie back to lot size, and you can find this map showing lot sizes around Eugene on our Middle Housing page. Here's a refresher on our project phases. We completed Phase 1 and are finishing up Phase 2, Design and Code Concept. This month, we're moving into code writing. And on this chart, you can see the major project tasks. Planning Commission and City Council check-ins are shown in the top bar. Public outreach was a big push in February with a lot of activities that Sophie will be telling you about shortly. We are here in the blue vertical bar on March 9th, looking ahead to drafting code in April and May. That'll be the subject of your April and May meetings. And we have another round of feedback sessions planned for April. Code products are due from the consultants by June 2021. And final code deadline is June 30th, 2022. At a future meeting, I'll be bringing you a more detailed timeline for the adoption phase that goes beyond June of this year. So now I'm going to pause and exit out of this because I'm going to play you a video. And so I have to share a different screen. Sophie pre-recorded her video. Sorry, I'm looking for which one it is. Guess. I guess it's this one. That's not it. There we go. Thanks for your patience, looking for the correct screen. No. Oh, I know what's wrong. I had my PowerPoint on both of my screens and I need to zoom out of that. Again, thanks for your patience. Okay, there we go. All right, so this video will play and then then we'll have time for Q and A afterwards. And here we go.
Hello Commissioners, I'm Sophie McGinnley, an Assistant Planner for the City of Eugene Community Funding and Design Team. And I'm serving as Public Engagement Lead for the Middle Housing Implementation Project. Tonight, I will be giving a Public Engagement Process Update after a busy month of outreach. I will walk through the Public Engagement Goals, embracing social media and virtual engagement, meeting in a box, themes from Roundtable meetings, preliminary results from the Middle Housing Survey, how we spread the word about the survey, and what's coming up next in public engagement. The Public Involvement Plan approved for the Planning Commission last year established a set of public engagement goals. These goals guided the process and set the standards for engagement for this project. This project is also different than the usual planning project for a few reasons. The project timeline that it's implementing a state law minimum standard and that it's been happening during a pandemic. The timeline is fast. House Bill 2001 was adopted in 2019. Oregon administrative rules were adopted in December 2020, and our code amendments need to be finalized for June 2022. It also has a unique aspect in that if we don't adopt code amendments in time, the model code will automatically apply. All this to say, we've been moving very quickly. We've also usually see projects that are initiated by the city council at the local level. This one is coming from the state. And as I mentioned, we have Oregon administrative rules that establish parameters for how we comply. This has led to an unusual project implementation and the need for clear, transparent communication with the community to explain the bill, its requirements, and the city's approach. Lastly, this project kicked off in July 2020 in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic. Outreach has had to shift online, creating barriers to and opportunity for engagement. I'm looking forward to taking your approach and showing how staff added tools to the public engagement toolbox to adapt to this unique project during a unique time. I'll start late. We knew that we wanted to reach folks. We don't have anything. Quickly through and tried something new with reaching out to Reddit. Here's a quick overview of our Facebook pages for posts directly related to middle housing. A notable number is that our post engagements increased by over 5,000% during the month of February on our outreach with much robust. We also called a series of five Facebook Live community conversations, local experts, including city staff, to discuss the connection between land use and merger topics. The idea was to attract folks who care about things like transit routes, equity, sustainability, and affordability, but don't yet know that by caring about those things, they also probably care about land use. But planning lexicon and processes can be technical and frankly, sometimes boring. By creating content of Facebook Live events, we hope to bring more people into the conversation and make land use policy more accessible. The most viewed event was the Land Use Equity Event that received almost 3,000 views. Here is a short clip from the event.
You know, the history of single-family zoning in the United States is one thing that distinguishes US zoning law from the zoning law of other countries. It's a feature of zoning law in this country that we break up or designate different zoning districts for single-family residential use and separately for other forms of homes, like multifamily homes. And the primary purpose originally for that was to segregate by race, in particular to create white-only neighborhoods.
As I mentioned, we used Instagram. We received more than 370 engagements with our posts, including those that advertised Facebook Lives, included clips from the events, and promoted this planning commission work session. We went outside our comfort zone, visited Reddit, a forum-based website, drafted an AMA called "Ask Me Anything", which is basically like a Q and A. It was hosted on the Eugene subreddit, kind of like a channel, that has 30,000 local members. It received over 100 comments, correlated with 90 new surveys we did, and established a relationship that can be continued for future outreach and projects. Staff also wanted to create materials that folks could use in groups, which resulted in the creation of Meeting in a Box, principal materials that enable community groups such as neighborhood associations to host their own meeting, conduct middle housing walking tours, and provide feedback to staff. They were recently released and are due by March 28th. Along with the Meeting in a Box, we held a variety of meetings with our stakeholder groups, including three meetings with the Healthy Democracy Panel, two meetings with the Equity Roundtable, one meeting with the Board of Institutions Roundtable, and one meeting with the Local Partners Roundtable. Meeting summaries from the Healthy Democracy Panel and Equity Roundtable are attached to tonight's meeting packet. In the fall of 2020, we met with the Board of Institutions and Local Partners Roundtables to receive input and informed the creation of the guiding values and principles for the project. At our most recent meetings last week, the Roundtable served as a triple bottom line sounding board to discuss the social, environmental, and economic trade-offs around choices for middle housing code standards. The Roundtable participants were asked the question, which implementation option allow, encourage, incentivize, best promote social equity, environmental health, and economic prosperity? And do your answers differ across the topic parking, lot coverage, and design standards? There were some high-level themes from the recent Board of Institutions and Local Partners Roundtables. There were shared themes of going beyond the minimum standards, looking to community values for guidance, and considering the interconnectedness of the triple bottom line. The meetings wrapped up last week, and full meeting summaries will be available soon. Along with hosting panels and roundtables, we wanted to hear from the community on the city's Engage Eugene platform. The platform provides opportunities for folks to engage, and the Middle Housing page provides project information, project updates, Q and A, and of course, the Middle Housing Survey. To spread the word about the survey, we sent tons of emails, including to the project interested parties list, through the monthly U2000 newsletter, Neighborhood Association chairs, and more. There were also targeted outreach. There was also targeted outreach conducted by consultant group Pugito and University of Oregon class visits by planning interns. Speaking of the interns, they also created a GIS story map for a Gen Z audience and used technical data paired with strategic community inclusion to reach a part of the community we don't usually hear from. It is awesome. Here's a graph showing daily views of the Middle Housing Engage Eugene page during the month the survey was open. The page received over 2,600 visits and averaged 332 views per day. This tool allows us to see the results of outreach efforts, with three recent efforts being highlighted. Our variety of public engagement events and efforts resulted in sustained and varied page views and engagement all month long. And now, for the moment you've been waiting for, let's dive into survey results. I'm speaking to you from the past. This is being recorded on March 5th. And as of the time this recording, the survey has received 702 responses. Fun fact, if all survey participants showed up here tonight and each provided two minutes of public comment, it would take almost 23 and a half hours to hear from everyone. That's a lot of input. I will walk through the preliminary results from each question in the order they are asked in the survey. The results that follow are preliminary, and the full survey summary is coming soon. First, we presented the eight project guiding values and principles and asked survey respondents to rank their top three. The clear frontrunner is equity and access to housing, followed by housing options of all shapes and sizes, and then vibrant neighborhoods. Then, we asked about the level of implementation and parking, lot coverage, and design standards. When asked how to implement new parking standards, 61% of survey respondents indicated support for going beyond the minimum standards and encouraging or incentivizing less required onsite parking. Then, we asked about lot coverage, and 83% of survey respondents indicated support for going beyond the minimum standards and encouraging or incentivizing the option for increasing maximum allowable lot coverage. Third, we asked about design standards, and 82% of survey respondents indicated support for going beyond the minimum standards and encouraging or incentivizing the option decreasing required design standards. Finally, we asked, in general, what directions folks feel is best for the Eugene community, with 82% of survey respondents indicating support for going beyond the minimum standards. Housing affects everyone, and we wanted to see who we were and were not hearing from in the survey. And so, we asked some optional demographic questions. A large majority of survey respondents indicated they live in Eugene, over half work in Eugene, and 87 of them attend school or university in Eugene. We also asked about residency status. 61% of survey respondents own their residence, and 37% rent their residence. Since this data is showing that more than half of Eugene community members rent their residence, the renter perspective is underrepresented in the survey. We did, however, reach folks who do not own or rent, and are sheltered, and in one case, unsheltered. We then asked about age and saw that 29% of survey respondents are under the age of 35, with just slightly more than half of survey respondents under the age of 44, followed by a surprising but delightful four survey respondents that are under the age of 17. Lastly, we asked folks to share their racial, ethnic identities. Survey respondents who chose to answer showed that 9% of survey respondents identify as white pop and 91% of survey respondents identify as white. With census data showing that 83% of Eugene community members identify as white, the white identifying perspective is overrepresented in the survey. In addition to the multiple choice questions I reviewed, the survey provides space for additional comments. Themes from those comments include wanting to go beyond the minimum standards, providing flexibility, spending for the future, especially with sustainability, and aligning work with city plans and goals, including those stated in the Climate Action Plan and Transportation System Plan. And again, since the survey recently closed, a full summary is coming soon. In addition to the English Engage Eugene survey, the project has a Spanish Engage Eugene survey. It was launched after the English survey and has received 10 responses so far. There is much more work to do to expand the accessibility planning project, and we are proud of the steps in the right direction. Although the survey is now closed, it's not even close to the end of the middle housing public engagement. In April, we will kick off more engagements that will focus on reviewing code language and exploring affordability strategies. We will continue to meet with the Healthy Democracy Panel, Equity Roundtable, Board of Institutions, and Local Partners Roundtables, as well as builders and developers. Stay tuned. And finally, thank you for your time and guidance in the public engagement process. Back to you, Teri. Thank you, and goodnight.
Thank you, Sophie, of the past. That was an exciting advancement in technology. And I actually do have another slide to just share a couple of things before we jump into the comments from Isis. And I'm not sure if Tanya is here. I don't see her. So that's good, I have a couple more things to say before we invite our guests to comment. Thanks for your patience. Oh, this one, back to the beginning, sorry about that. Okay. So I'm actually going to tell you about the Healthy Democracy results that were attached and then flip back to the Equity Roundtable slide and invite the comments from our guest. So you may have noticed the Healthy Democracy attachment in your packet. They, in addition to the roundtables, this panel dove into the same survey questions, and I've summarized their results here on this slide. The Healthy Democracy input on the survey questions included the question of general approach to middle housing, and it came in at allow 15%, encourage 19%, and incentivize 65%. Similar to the other groups, there were a variety of opinions expressed, and the only topic that leaned away from incentivized was parking, with a 998 vote count, so kind of pretty even across the board on those three categories. I'll also note that Healthy Democracy was also charged with making general public engagement recommendations city, and that report is forthcoming. A spoiler is that the panel agrees that this pilot project was meaningful and successful and that the recommendations should include continuing aspects of this process forward into the future. Panelists from Healthy Democracy are looking forward to sharing more details at future meetings. But today, we have at least one guest from the Equity Roundtable, and after hearing all of the results that Sophie shared, I'm especially excited to invite Isis to share her perspective of participating on the Equity Roundtable. So I'll kick it to you, Isis. You can just unmute yourself.
Hello. Thanks for having me. So I think one of the highlights for me, not only being a part of the Roundtable and being able to bring different perspectives, is I've never owned a home. Nobody in my family has owned a home. I am a mother of four, and one of the biggest barriers, and I had a conversation recently with a friend of mine about middle housing is that it's it's not new that people of color have had these barriers, but not only with rules and regulations that sometimes are still in deeds in city limits, but black people weren't allowed to own homes. They weren't allowed to be in the city limits, they weren't allowed to live. I come from, I work at the NAACP. So we, for those who are not familiar, we are housed in the first black-owned home within city limits. So that's just a powerful building to be in in the first place. But you know, as a mother, it's hard to explain to your kids why you don't have enough money to go and buy a house. it's hard to explain to your kids why you don't have enough money to go and buy a house. You know, you pay rent, you pay your bills, but all they're seeing is we're living in an apartment, and my friends have a house down the street. Why can't we have one too? So when I had this conversation with my friend, we talked about how, you know, when she was married, her in-laws gave them a down payment for a house. Her parents gave them money to fix anything that needed to be fixed. And it was interesting to have that conversation because I was raised by a single mom with five kids. So when we had a home growing up that we rented, we didn't own it. So when we grew up and we outgrew the house, it wasn't something that we had to show my kids. You know, it was like, okay, well, grandma doesn't live in that house anymore because, you know, we outgrew it, and she doesn't need to pay for a big house, you know? And I think that the idea of having the ability for middle housing in general opens up the doors for people like myself, people like myself who may not have a down payment for a house and may not have equity in any assets to bring forth to provide, you know, a better size house that's more what I want. I shared this in our roundtable, and when my children were all small and I was a full-time student, I lived in low-income housing, and I had three children with asthma and myself, and I had a smoker that lived below me that was allowed to smoke in her building. So my house would fill with smoke, and I wasn't allowed to have anything on my patio such as a garden because it blocked other people's views of me, which confused me. But you know, I had a lot of barriers put in my way that didn't make any sense, that were things that I was trying to make more of a normalized environment for my children, such as growing our own food and raising them to understand where food comes from, but yet being stuck in this poverty situation where I couldn't go and get a three-bedroom for the income that I was on going to school all the time with three small children. So the passion that I have just imagining being able to have the opportunity to have a house is so strong, and having the ability to have a garden and have parking for safety and being able to live in a neighborhood that I choose and not in an area based on my income or based on my qualifications for a house is huge to me. And I'm happy that this conversation has started and that the city has done so much with reaching so many different people. However, the conversation is just beginning, and a lot of people don't want to share it because of pride and because of the lack of knowledge of what their voice really means in this situation. I feel like, for me, I'm coming as a mother, and being able to safely get my groceries in the house and my kids being able to be outside safely in a garden in their backyard like I was able to do is really important to me. And I have this five-year plan that I will have the house that I want, the kitchen that I want. And so going through the slides, you know, in our roundtable and seeing that there's rules and regulations about, you know, how many parking spaces you get or what your windows, or being able to have, you know, all of these newer foundations and windows and things that are going to help keep your house not only just safe, but also equitable. And looking at sustainability and having, you know, something like if we were in somewhere warmer, we could have, you know, the solar panels and so forth, and, you know, it would do a lot for us, but not as much as, you know, California would. But just, you know, having those opportunities available and reachable are so exciting to me, you know, because I know that it's going to happen, and for me, I don't want to feel like I'm putting into buying a house, but yet I'm not in the right bracket to be able to get exactly what I want, but I have these barriers that block me from being able to have an extra parking space or a space for a garden or have safety in my neighborhood or feeling like I can stay within the area that I'm comfortable with and that my kids go to school in, you know? So that was kind of what I wanted to share and how I, you know, see things, and I see things moving in the right direction. I just really hope that we can make this opportunity more for community members who have been here and not people that are moving from different states because they hear that we have this middle housing project coming and that we can be more of an example to other states and show that we can successfully do this and bring our communities, not only just the community, but the communities of color included, and make them feel like they have a space. We're doing so much. The city's doing so much with the change in Alton Baker Park that I think it's really important that we start looking at how we can continue to build our community into what we want our community to be, and less talking about it and more doing.
Thank you, Isis. Great. So this is the point where we'll break, and I'll pass it back over to Commissioner Beeson to moderate some Q and A.
Yeah, so we've got a few minutes for questions, so if you've got questions, I'll ask you to raise your hand, and we'll go through it. I appreciate hearing from Isis and Teri and also Sophie virtually, but anyway, any questions? I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing any. Okay, there's Commissioner Borowski, please.
Thank you. It's not just so much of a question. It's more of a comment. I'm really impressed with the public outreach program that you guys put forward. You know, we signed off on this last spring and brought in Healthy Democracy as a trial. You know, it was something that we haven't done here in our community before. From what I've heard from stakeholders who are involved with it and people who've been on the periphery of it, they said that it was a great experience. You know, I don't know if I have the correct number, Teri. You may be able to help me with this, but something like thirty people were drafted into the Healthy Democracy thing, and twenty-six of them had never participated in the city public process before, and most of them now would like to be part of public processes, so I think that that's very encouraging. I like the fact that they were hearing from people that we don't normally hear from. I also had the opportunity to watch one of the roundtables. I just fell into it on YouTube one night, late at night, and watched that, a stakeholder meeting, and it was very informative. So I just want to give props and kudos out to staff and all of the people that helped with the public outreach process to help us make the decisions going forward. I think this is a great template to use in many aspects of the city's outreach, not just land use planning. So thank you to everybody who was involved.
Commissioner Fragula, please.
Thank you. So I also wanted to say that I'm really impressed by the public outreach. When I've worked on different types of community engagement projects, and some of the data that you were sharing about the Facebook engagement and Instagram and Reddit and even the hits on our website were really impressive. And I'm just, I'm thinking back to previous surveys that we've looked at, and I don't think the numbers of engagements were anywhere near as high. And so also really impressed, but also really noting that the significant trend towards incentivizing or encouraging, and I think that's really important information for us to be considering and hearing as a commission, because it's not just from one roundtable. It's not just from one group. It's pretty extensive. And I wanted to thank ISIS for being here today and sharing your story. I'm a second-grade teacher, and the story you shared really, really touched me. And I appreciate that. Appreciate that you shared it today. And I wanted to ask you, when you think about the decisions that we will be making as a planning commission, I mean, we make recommendations. We don't really get to decide anything. What suggestions would you give us? What direction would you like us to head in? If we made you, you know, the decision-maker for a day, like, what things would you like to see happening around some of the, you know, allowing, encouraging, and incentivizing ideas?
I think for me, the biggest thing is being able to see that there's housing opportunities in more areas of town and not just apartments. I think that, you know, when I had my kids climbing up cement stairs with three kids under three and all of my groceries, when I had to park, you know, a quarter of a mile away and wrangle all my kids, it wasn't safe. It wasn't easy. And it was the one thing that I shouldn't have had to stress about is safely getting into my home with my kids. And I think material is huge, right? So concrete stairs, when you think of concrete stairs on a second story, not really something that, you know, you want to put for little kids that are supposed to be living in an area. And also having opportunity for, you know, gardens and playgrounds and safe places, you know? Because sometimes when we look at low-income housing and middle housing, we're looking below somebody and we're thinking that they don't want what we want, right? And I think it's so important to look at, what would you like? What do you love about your backyard? What do you love about your house? Do you love that you have a fridge that you don't have to replace in a year or two? Do you love that you have the ability to walk outside safely in your backyard or in your front yard? And you have a parking spot. You know, those are things that I think are really important.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more questions? Commissioner Isaacson.
Thanks. You know, it's more of a comment, and I also want to thank Isis for being here, being part of the roundtable. You know, we talked a lot about parking, and I brought this up then. I'll bring it up now. You know, spending twelve years in Chicago, no one owns a car. You just, you just take a lot of different transportation options, you know? But for folks who aren't on the lowest rungs of society, they may not get the connection to having that car because not being able to, I park my car, go inside at the evening. I come outside. I know it's going to be there. It doesn't compute that it won't be. That car goes away. I lose my job. I lose my house, and it becomes a domino effect very quickly. For those who become homeless, that car becomes a part of rent for them. And so having parking as an incentivized function of what we do is a direct correlation to keeping people in housing, keeping people in their jobs, keeping the economy going and gaining that lifeline. To separate the two, I don't think you could really do it, and it was nice to see that we addressed it in that and that we're addressing it here.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you. So I'm just a little bit confused when Isis and Commissioner Isaacson are talking about parking and incentivizing. The way that I read incentivizing parking in the model codes and trying to get more housing would be incentivizing means allowing less parking as a way to get more housing built. Am I not reading that correct? Because what I'm hearing them saying is incentivizing parking means making sure there's a parking spot. I just want to, I just want to get that juxtaposition out there because I'm hearing two different things.
Teri, do you want to?
Yeah, I could jump in on that one. It did come up in every conversation, every roundtable at Healthy Democracy and obviously in the survey. I think there is that tension, and that is the one survey question that tended more towards the allow. And really, it was kind of even across the board. There are strong feelings and opinions about parking on all sides, I think, it's fair to say. So my takeaway is be careful with what we do with parking. It's important for especially lower-income people to, that might depend on it. And that was a key takeaway, especially from the Equity Roundtable and from Healthy Democracy, is that parking is really, really important to folks who might have multiple jobs or just need access to have caregivers come and park or any number of things. You know?
So, so question then, Teri. So when we use the terminology incentivizing in these categories, incentivizing of parking, does that mean lowering the requirement for number of parkings? Or does it mean encouraging more parking? Because we've got to describe that term going forward. Because in Echo Northwest, they talk about incentivizing parking in one way, and I'm hearing it in another. So I need to be clear on that.
Yeah, thanks for that. We, I think the way the survey was answered and the way the discussions unfolded in the panels, it was, there were some people who wanted to incentivize middle housing by taking away parking requirements. That was part of it. But there were also people who wanted to make sure that parking was provided, and that was more about allowing or going with the model code. So I didn't hear a misunderstanding, if that makes sense, in the live conversations. I didn't hear anyone saying let's incentivize parking and having them mean provide parking. I think it was just more about the discussion and the tension around recognizing that it's needed and maybe isn't the place where we want to go with the incentivized option. Okay.
Okay, thanks. One more, Commissioner Fragula, and then I think I'm going to move on to the Echo Northwest. Mr. Fragula.
I guess I just wanted to say the way I've been thinking about it is that it's allow, encourage, or incentivize middle housing. Like, that's what we're discussing, right? And so when we're talking about allowing, encouraging, or incentivizing middle housing in this category of parking, there was a very even split across the board. We're not discussing allowing, encouraging, or incentivizing parking. We're discussing middle housing in a category related to parking. That's how I think about it.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to talk about parking a little more here in the third
Yeah.
So let me, I'm going to kick it back to Teri, and we can move on to the Echo Northwest analysis.
Right. Thank you. I'm going to run the PowerPoint and let Tyler tell me when to advance slides. So I'll go ahead and start sharing. Yeah. Go ahead, Tyler.
All right. Thank you, Teri, and good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for having me back to talk to you about the results of our analysis. All right, thank you, Terry, and good evening, Commissioners, thank you for having me back to talk you, talk to you about the results of our analysis. Uh, a a couple notes on what we're gonna talk about today, so I'm gonna give an overview of our key findings, sort of walk through some of the charts. Uh related to the findings, um have some context around pricing a little bit, which I think will be helpful for your discussions later on. Um and then open it up for questions, so next slide, please, Terry. Um, so the the overall big questions that we were asked as part of this work was where is middle housing feasible? And to what extent is middle housing feasible in different parts of Eugene? Um, one piece of clarification that I do wanna highlight at the beginning is this analysis was not intended to predict whether. Uh or when individual properties will be developed. We are looking at uh identifying the prevalence of properties that could. Allow for middle housing development to occur based on uh buildable area and financial feasibility specifically. And so we oftentimes call this a market capacity analysis, uh so the amount of parcels that could redevelop. Uh not that these will occur at with certainty at any point in time, or that individual parcels are likely to happen at any point in time. Um, we always like to to reference that, you know, decisions are made by sellers, by buyers, by developers in many different ways. And that what we're doing is contextualizing the impact of different policy choices here, policy options. Um, a little bit on where we focused our analysis, so the focus of our testing middle housing was on the R1 zones. And some of the other special area zones uh that are predominantly single dwelling. Uh allowances that don't allow for middle housing, so we worked with staff to identify some areas, special area zones to analyze there. Um, we looked at both vacant land and redevelopment potential, specifically on lots under an acre in size. Uh, we aggregated the results, uh aggregated neighborhoods up to uh subareas in the in the memo. Um and a reporting results at the subarea level, uh there's a map that's a little bit easier to read uh on page six of the memo that's part of the packet. Uh and that again, we consider the buildable area and whether a developer could afford to buy the property to develop it, if the property owner decided to sell. And so this doesn't make an assumption of anybody selling or everybody selling, it's really this this sort of total capacity piece. Next slide, please, Terry. So overall, in results here, uh I kinda wanna walk through how to interpret these charts a little bit before I talk about key findings. Uh in this chart here, we have the subareas at the bottom of the charts. Uh and number of parcels on the Y-axis or the left-hand side of the chart. Um, the gray bars are the total parcels that were analyzed in each of the subareas. So this is all of the homeowners, special areas and parcels that we looked at. Uh, the orange bars represent the parcels that are financially feasible for single family development. So that's today and into the future, can you build detached single family development? The sort of magenta pink color are the parcels that are financially feasible for middle housing development. Uh, and so one of the the big key takeaways here is that the rate of change is likely to be incremental. Uh, so in most of these subareas, you can see that the the size of the bar for financial feasibility is pretty small. Relative to the overall um sample size or the amount of parcels within each subarea. Uh, the other thing is that middle housing is financially feasible across all of the subareas that we looked at too, which was a key result or a key finding here. Um, and that more parcels are feasible for middle housing than single family development, and this gets to that. Uh, what are the outcomes of potential middle housing? Are we going to see middle housing, single family, this analysis indicates that yes, in many cases, and it's in. In individual situations that that uh middle housing is going to be more financially feasible than single family development. Um, one note is the south, southeast, southwest, Ferry Street Bridge, central west. And North Gillum subareas have the greatest number of tax, tax lots or parcels that are financially feasible for middle housing development. Um, and even in these areas, change is expected to be pretty incremental. Um, so those are the areas that see the most results uh in terms of utilization, but still incremental in terms of the overall um rate of change. Next slide, please, Terry. All right, uh, the next slide here, we look at, in the yellow bars is single family feasibility. And the purply-magenta pink bars is uh middle housing feasibility. And this is where we've looked at uh feasibility on both vacant parcels as well as redevelopment capacity on. Uh parcels with existing buildings on. Uh, so that anything that's the lighter shade is development that's occurring on vacant parcels. Anything that's the darker shade uh is development that's occurring as a result of redevelopment. Uh, most middle housing development potential across Eugene and across subareas is on vacant lands. And on that vacant lands, single family development is still feasible in many situations. Which just indicates that a mix of housing types is likely moving into the future, even when middle housing types are left. So that is a way of saying that not every instance of development or redevelopment is going to be middle housing. But uh it's up to really the the builder and the demand side, the potential buyer or renter, where the market is in these individual subareas. Uh redevelopment potential is higher for lower value properties and desirable areas. So we see a few key areas where redevelopment is a, occurs at a higher rate, so in the central west subarea. Uh Ferry Street Bridge and North Gillum, there could be some uh waiting towards some high amenity areas in there. That are skewing the results a little bit, but we still feel like redevelopment is more, uh is a higher share of overall development buffer. Well, specifically for middle housing in most locations. Uh, in the southeast and southwest subareas, much of the development potential is on vacant land, where single family development is also viable. Um, even though middle housing achieves a higher residual land value, the single family detached development, the if there in these areas. They're still likely to de- develop with a mix of different housing types, both single family and middle housing as well. Next slide, please, Terry. Um, so this next chart uh shows the different uh physical prototypes that we were looking at along the bottom. So we've got duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes, cottage clusters and single family, as well as variations by lot size. And uh finishes really were essentially mid-range or high-end um development. Uh, across the board, what we're finding is that, and this is not unique to Eugene, it's what we're finding in many other communities throughout Oregon. Is that townhouses are likely to be the most feasible development type in most areas, uh and that's followed up by fourplexes. Uh, fourplexes allow higher utilization um and and more financial feasible returns for development. And some of the other prototypes, the duplexes, triplexes, uh but in many cases, they're all feasible. So it could be up to the market about what what gets provided in different subareas. Student-oriented middle housing may work closer to the university, but there are a few suitable properties where that, where that makes sense. Um, not a lot of our ones, and many, many of those locations where you might see more student housing. Um, and many middle ha- middle housing types are more financially feasible than single family housing. But can still face other challenges for development, um broader market utilization, uh familiarity of builders that build this product type. Uh, the demand side from either a renter or homeowner perspective, um either for fee simple development in townhomes or for. Uh condos in a triplex, fourplex scenario that has HOAs, so a lot of other factors that are involved in this as well. Um cottage clusters are less financially feasible than some other middle housing types. But they might appeal to buyers who prefer uh smaller detached housing in that cottage uh configuration. Uh which could make them more likely to be built, um even when the financial results would suggest otherwise. So there could be a demand component to that on the, on the cottage side. Uh, and one thing to note is that uh even high-end middle housing is likely to be less expensive than high-end single family housing. So an interesting finding on both the high end for detached single family and high-end town, townhome construction. Next slide, please, Terry. Uh, this is a chart that looks at the for sale pricing by development type. Uh, so again, at the bottom, we've got the the development uh prototype, we're looking at duplex, triplex. Um townhouse, different townhouse types, different unit sizes, different finishes. Uh, and I wanted to to do a quick high-level comparison on, on this chart with a few key points. Next slide, please, Terry. So what this blue bar represents here is the range of sales prices or feasible. Mid-range single family development today in Eugene. Uh, and so this shows something along the lines of one hundred twenty-five thousand to about five hundred thousand dollars per single family detached. Uh house that could be built in in uh Eugene today and under middle housing regulations. Uh, that that bar or the arrow is supposed to indicate uh the. The decrease in price associated with middle housing allowances. So uh that's the range at which you can see decreases in price in that arrow. And what that equates to broadly across the board is about an eighteen to twenty percent reduction in estimated sales prices. Between single family and middle housing. Eighteen percent, twenty percent doesn't really sound like a lot, but I've got ahead and looked to see what that means in terms of a mortgage payment and a sales price. So in terms of the overall uh impact on a sales price on a per-unit basis, it's about seventy-five. Oh, to about a hundred thousand dollars a year in less expensive housing than a detached single family. Uh, what that means in terms of monthly savings is anywhere between two hundred and sixty-five and three hundred and fifty dollars a month. Uh, or about thirty-five hundred to forty-two hundred dollars a year in mortgage savings. Just from the this, the difference in in affordability between for-sale product is middle housing versus single family housing. So eighteen percent is helpful, and it's very helpful on a monthly housing budget and for folks to be able to access housing at different price points. Next slide, please. Uh, this gets to the high-end variation. So it shows the change in 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 high-end uh sales price differences between. Single family detached housing and higher-end detached townhome housing. So again, both on the mid-range and the and the high-end housing reductions in overall sales price uh between these prototypes as well. Next slide, please, Terry. And then on the rental side, um this again shows the 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 estimated monthly rent for each of these prototypes by by subarea. Uh, we had some conversation at the last uh uh planning commission meeting when I, when I spoke with you all about affordability and the. The Lane County Affordable Housing Action Plan and the sort of uh uh targets for different MFI levels. Um, and I showed a chart that showed different income levels and different price points and what that means in terms of AMI and the five. Uh, and the blue bar here represents eighty percent to a hundred percent median family income for both two and three bedroom units. So essentially, any of these bars by subarea uh that is at. Uh below or within that blue horizontal bar across the middle is affordable to eighty percent or a hundred percent AMI, MFI. For a two and three bedroom unit in uh Lane County. And eighty percent rent for a two-bedroom unit is about one thousand two hundred and sixty dollars a month. And a one hundred percent AMI for a three-bedroom unit is about one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars a month. So that's the the range in that blue band where the majority of some of this middle housing as a rental product fits within that eighty percent to a hundred percent. MFI category. Next slide, please, Terry. Oh, we're under code writing, so I guess questions before we move to the next section.
Okay, we're gonna uh take time for questions, I'm gonna do a. We've got twenty to twenty-five minutes just to kinda keep us all centered on time. So. Do we have questions or comments? Commissioner Fragala.
Thank you, um, am I correct? Did those, did, was there a shift in some of this data since just the last time you presented? That indicates housing prices have increased just in a short time, like noticeably?
So the, this is the market feasible development by the prototypes today. And I think what we were showing before was housing affordability more broadly. Uh, and so it's a difference between the houses, you know, units that are affordable today versus uh feasibility and what price points. Those would need to hit for new construction, that's the difference between the data.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, so I think my question would be. Um, when we look at the feedback we're getting from stakeholders, the community. Roundtables, there's a lot of indication that creating. Access to housing is is a real priority, so when you, when you look at the information that you have there. What would you say we can do to encourage? The greatest capacity for affor- access to affordable housing, and I'm not necessarily talking big A affordable, right?
Sure. Um, that's a great question. I would say that part of that is around trade-offs with some of the other outcomes that I think folks have talked about. Of wanting to see out of this, out of this project. In most cases, well, what we're, what we're clearly finding here is that unit size is a big indicator of price. And that the smaller the unit, the more, or the less expensive uh that unit is likely to be. With the acknowledgement that there has been a desire for more family-sized units too. So I think there's a trade-off between unit size, price point, and the unit type that's desired or needed within the community. So again, that's part of the trade-off conversation, um but there certainly are some other, other aspects of thinking about. How to encourage or incentivize in different ways depending on the the outcomes that folks would like to see as part of this project.
So for example, you didn't look at things for plexes that went beyond fourplexes to like. What happened in Portland where it's like, I don't even know the word for five, six, seven plexes, right? Um, you just, you stopped at fourplexes, so do those hi- housing types allow us to. Create greater opportunity for access to affordable housing?
Without looking at it, for sure, I would say that they could. Um, but we'd want to look into that in more detail, I think what we've evaluated here is the direction of HB two thousand and one. And as the conversations evolve towards, you know, prioritizing outcomes or the encourage incentivize along different, along different uh preferred outcomes that. That's one of the things that could be evaluated. Um, I had, we Echo Northwest, we had done that, some of that work for the city of Portland, for the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. Um, you get into a point of starting to think about who the different actors are. That would build different things and how do you structure or incentives or regulatory approach to try to have some more nuance towards that. Um, but I do think it could be helpful, but we haven't looked at it yet, um but it's certainly doable to do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson, I just wanted to actually tack on to that question that Commissioner Fragala had. Because I think from, in it, as I'm thinking about it, the. This process is only looking at R1 through R4. So where we would find that, that those type of housing currently is like C2. Where you'd have, you know, big, tall, you know, student housing complexes and things like that, so. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, we, we aren't looking at any of that in this process, is that correct, Tyler?
I will defer to staff on density allowances, the direction of the projects, Terry, Jeff, I think you'll probably have a better answer to that.
Yeah, I'm happy to quickly address that, so um. In terms of density allowances and and looking at R2, 3 and 4, uh one of the reasons that we focused on R1 with this analysis is because it's the. Zone with the greatest amount of impact from the House Bill and middle housing code changes. Essentially, R2, R3 and R4, um with their allowed densities, I mean, the max densities are are. Especially when you get to R4, I mean, those tower blocks can easily fit within most. Um, it doesn't have to be C2, it could be R4 and easily reach that level. Um, R1 is the only residentially zone, residential zone that doesn't permit. Duplexes, triplexes and quadrplexes like outright, there are special stipulations with those. So knowing that, we wanted to focus on that zone because if we'd analyzed R2, it would have, it would have been. Yeah, duplex can go there already, like, uh there's not much, there's not much net change. Um, the only additional impact that's associated with R2, 3 and 4 is that the multifamily standards apply to triplexes and fourplexes. Um, so just, I hope that's not way more information than you wanted, but.
I have more to add, actually. Because I heard another part of your question, Commissioner Edwards, to be, are we only, are we limited to looking up to four plus? And townhouses, and there, and Lauren, you can chime in if this is um. If it's isn't quite right, but my understanding is that Portland looked at this. Ahead of House Bill two thousand and one being put in place, but that there aren't limits. Oh, Matt turned his camera on too, he might have an answer to this one. There aren't um limits in the rules or in the House Bill itself that say that we can't consider six plexes or eight plexes. Or do that through a density bonus in certain locations, so I wanted to put that out there, that's part of what Portland was looking at.
Yeah, Terry, that's accurate, the, so House Bill two thousand and one requires us to allow. Those middle housing types that we've identified duplex, triplex.
those middle housing types that we've identified duplex, triplex, quadplex, townhouses and cottage clusters. The city has its own authority to decide to allow bigger plexes, different housing types. Um, so yeah, we're certainly not prohibited by the legislation from going beyond.
I think one additional clarification on what Portland had done is they, as Terry mentioned, they did allow six or will allow when the code goes into effect in August, um, six units as part of a density bonus structure that requires that three of those units be rent restricted over a longer period of time. So there is a rent restriction component where that additional density bonus is accessed through uh, a capital A affordable housing component, which is, these are rent restricted units longer term and they need to be administered and monitored long, long term um, as well. So it is a little bit specific in the, in the rent restriction part and the capital A affordable housing and that for density bonus in the residential infill project.
Okay, Commissioner uh, Barofsky, and then I, I'd like to get in with a couple of questions. Thanks.
Commissioner, you're muted.
Thank you. Um, in the packet, you noted that townhouses were the most probably uh, type of middle housing that will be feas, economically feasible at this time. Do you see that as rental townhouses? I, I'm looking at both of them. It looked like it was, it was most feasible in rental and in homeownership. And I might be jumping ahead of myself here into, into code writing. But can you see things, I noticed you, you put out there that one of the barriers to townhouses is fee simple ownership? Is that something that we should look, that you weighed in on saying that townhouses are more likely to be built because of the opportunity for fee simple ownership?
I think it's helpful. The fee simple ownership is helpful from both a builder and a sort of buyer demand perspective. You get into some code issues around minimum lot size and land divisions and other things that are challenging outside of the context of HB two thousand and one or can be outside of the context of HB two thousand and one, which Matt will know much better uh, is part of the conversation here. But townhomes are, are, are an attractive development type um, for both homeownership, predominantly homeownership. Um, ownership for four plexes, triplexes uh, can physically look similar to townhomes. But do you have uh, cost implications on both the development side associated with construction defect liability and HOAs, as well as additional costs on the owner's side through monthly HOAs over time. So there is a little bit of variation and that's why the townhomes are are generally more feasible. But you know, four plexes also perform pretty well as well as do triplexes. So I think that the reality is, is that when middle housing occurs, townhomes are going to be the most feasible, but I think a lot of the sub areas are going to see a mix of middle housing types as well as single family moving into the future if they were allowed.
Okay, I, I've got Commissioner Isaacson in the queue. Before I go to you, I've got a, just a couple of questions or points I want to hit briefly. Uh, Tyler, in your report on page four, you talk about a later evaluation coming to address impacts of development regulations, informed decisions, et cetera. I um, as I went through this report, I, I found myself wanting to uh, understand pretty specifically how to connect your analysis to the code amendment work we're going to be doing in the next couple of months. And I think a couple of commissioners have asked questions kind of getting at that. I I'm um, I'm just thinking it's, it's gonna be, you know, in, in terms of us evaluating the standards and and uh, going through and trying to determine you know, incentivized versus encouraged and how far to turn the dials and so on, the more information we can have about how to do it. So I'm interested in when we might get that. Uh, and I'm also I guess, let me also just kind of throw in, not to complicate it. I I found, I, the more I looked at it, I think sub areas were interesting and sub areas make sense. I sort of wondered, gosh, why didn't we look at neighborhoods? And um, I'm thinking possibly the, the data you have in sub areas can maybe be extrapolated to neighborhoods to a degree. The, the next step I went I want to do this briefly, but I, in, in some of the reading, in, I guess a bunch of the reading, there is a lot of connection between walkability as it's defined across the nation, walkability and middle housing. And I, I found myself wondering about your analysis, instead of looking at sub areas, had it been done to look at uh, transit uh, areas or uh, you know, major and minor arterials and so on, where you had that, the, the proximity of the middle housing to amenities and so on. Can you? Just a couple of comments on that?
Yes, I can add a couple of comments. You could talk for a long time about that. Those are great questions. So the sub areas, why sub areas and not neighborhoods? It was a function of observations. We wanted to make sure that we had enough observations within the sub areas to accurately evaluate the, what the results would be. And so we needed to have, we, we leaned on a lot of the transaction trends uh, development trends of recently built middle housing to evaluate this. And so we had to have a bit of a bigger area to have enough observations to feel confident in the result. So that's the, the reasoning for the sub areas. Um, and the sub areas, it, for the most part, do exhibit fairly similar market characteristics as well. And so we feel good about we're beginning with the sub areas, uh, both because we had to with observations, but also because they, they generally make sense as we look at them. On the amenity value or the transit walkability thing, um, if we had taken a different approach, we would I think the questions would be a little bit different because we know that areas closer to amenities like transit or walkability or, you know, daily services or, you know, civic facilities or social services, even in many cases have in, in, uh, have value associated with them in terms of pricing. So uh, transit access, walkability, those things translate generally to higher rents, higher prices. And so I think there was, the analysis would look a little bit different. But ultimately, I think it, some of the results that we have bear out the proximity to amenity, in many cases across sub areas. So we see sub areas that have higher amenity value that have, you know, probably more uh, walkability, that have more access to services performing better. Um, so to some extent, that's reflected in the market data. Um, but I, I think if we were to focus on amenities, it would, the analysis probably would look a little bit different.
Good. Okay, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Isaacson.
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, one of the things I liked about the report was talking about the cost savings uh, between the different options. And one of the things I think would be really helpful is not to, to bring ISIS kind of back into this to a certain degree, but uh, the, there are people who are just in the cusp of being able to afford a home for the first time. And so we're talking about dropping the price down, um, both either in rent or in a mortgage. So what is the real world reality of that change? In other words, so what kind of credit score would it require uh, to get into a four hundred thousand dollar house versus a three hundred thousand dollar house versus a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar house versus a six hundred thousand dollar house? Right? What was the income requirement? So how many more people in our community would now be um, I able to apply and can be approved for a house um, based on these measures? That would be said, it's some real world, on the ground information that I would love to know um, to see that we're, we're we're adhering to the ultimate goal, which is to get more people into housing for the first time into mental housing.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. Um, I think there's a couple of things. One is we'd have to, to dig a little bit into sort of lending standards and debt income requirements and uh, down payment and interest rates. And so when we do these sort of things, we take a realistic, fairly conservative approach to interest rates because we don't want to reflect, you know, a sub three point O interest rate that's not going to likely to last long term. Um, but I can tell you the example that I gave in the eighteen percent reduction of single family versus uh, middle housing ownership cost. You know, that is a difference, if in the conversation earlier about down payment, is a difference of about fifteen to twenty thousand dollars in less down payment required, which is a big deal, like, but the ability to save up fifteen to twenty thousand dollars is a, is a chunk of change to do. So uh, that's the down payment savings. I also calculated not accounting for interest, but same cost savings or thirty for mortgage um, between those two examples and that eighteen percent, and it's a difference of a hundred and five thousand to about a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars over thirty for mortgage and middle housing ownership versus single family detached ownership.
Not including the interest.
Not including the interest.
Not including the interest.
Yeah, so that's straight over time.
Over thirty years, we're looking at uh, almost a quarter million dollars that, that somebody doesn't have to pay to get into the, um, to be a homeowner for the first time. I think that, that's the narrative um, that is driving this whole training.
Other questions? Okay, good. Thank you. Um, so Terry, why don't we shift on to Matt?
Great, thank you. Okay. Now we're onto the code writing approach. Um, now that we have rules, principles, outreach results and economic feasibility results, we can do a very informed job of um, starting to write these rules and bring them to you over your next couple of meetings. So Matt and I are going to go over the next couple of slides here. Um, you might recall this, this um, slide from your February first deep dive into the rules. And so this is just a reminder of the categories of code language that we need to work on for each of the middle housing types. So we'll be looking at what is the approval process to get the type of housing built? Approval process required by the city? What are the number of units that we can require or allow? Uh, what are the siding standards such as lot size and density, setbacks, height, parking, coverage and sufficient infrastructure? And then what are the design standards that are required, if any? In your packet, you probably saw a set of key questions, and these are meant to illustrate for you the questions that the project team is beginning to ask. So now, again, now that we have all of the input and we have the final rules, we want to consider those things in our approach to writing the code. So the first question is, what approach do we want to use overall? This was a survey question. And as Commissioner Fragola noted, we saw a pretty strong trend line somewhere between encourage and incentivize at the general level. And in some groups, it was very strongly towards incentivized middle housing. Also, um, what approach best supports the triple bottom line? So this is a, a question that occurred to the project team because anytime we're working on a policy issue, we use the city of UTEAM, this is the framework of the triple bottom line of sustainability to evaluate policy choices. In some projects, we pulled together a triple bottom line founding board. In this case, we had lots of different boards to talk with about this issue. And so we did this and included it in the notes. And uh, the fun takeaway I'll mention from this one is that uh, it's a way for staff to think about who benefits from the different policy options. And we started to hear some of that in terms of parking and the trade-offs there. And also that these three legs of the triple bottom line really relate and interrelate to one another. And that occurred in all of the conversations as well, that as we're looking at trade-offs for social or environmental or economic, you can't kind of get away from the interrelatedness of the different parts of our code and the different kinds of issues that we're addressing. So I'm going to kick it over to Matt now, and he'll guide us through the rest of the slides having to do with the code.
Yeah, thanks, Terry. And so I'll say a little bit about each slide. I think after I say a little bit about each slide, I'd, I'd love to um, hear any thoughts people have because it might be hard to kind of go back and give me thoughts on this slide back here after I've already talked about the next one. So if that works for folks, that's kind of what I would suggest. Um, so um, one of the questions, you know, for us to ask is, you know, which approach allow, encourage, incentivize? Should we use, should the city use um, four standards related to lot sizes? Um, and other kind of base development standards, lot coverage, height, setbacks, parking, et cetera. And I'd say a couple of things that are, one, we will need to look at each of those standards discreetly to some degree. Um, and we can think about each of those within that framework of allow, encourage, incentivize. But we also are, those things are interrelated. You, you, if you change apart, the amount of parking you require, or you change the setbacks, that impacts what you can realistically do or achieve in terms of lot coverage. So we're going to, I think, necessarily need to look at these in terms of some packages related to those three options, allow, encourage, incentivize. Um, so that's kind of where we're heading. And I think, you know, we want to get some feedback from you. Does that make sense? Um, and beyond that, you know, any thoughts about um, kind of how we look at those things? And then I'll just say a little bit about um, the next item here, D. Um, so there's kind of a couple of ways to think about applying design standards. There are uh, kind of a limited basic set of design standards in the model code that have essentially been vetted as these are things that um, are not considered to cause unreasonable cost and delay. Um, if you want to do something that's sort of more standards or more restrictive than that, then you're going to have to look at would they cause unreasonable cost and delay? But if you want to be less restrictive, um, that could sort of translate to the encourage um, or incentivize options. Um, but there's going to be some trade-offs in terms of um, kind of even further reducing use of those limited options for design standards to something less restrictive. So I think, um, you know, that's what we need to sort of think about in terms of applying design standards in your base residential zones. Um, so I'm going to stop here for a moment, um, and just see if you have any thoughts on either of those items, and then we'll go on to the next slide.
So Matt's looking for some reactions and thoughts. I've got uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Commissioner Beeson. Um, I, I have a question slash comment. Um, in thinking about the, the approach, um, you know, the allow, uh, encourage, incentivize, I'm wondering if there is a way in this process that, that, you know, do we have to do kind of a one size fits all or I'll give an example, is it possible to, you know, allow for parking, for example, provisions around parking to be unique to areas that are within a proximity of a transit line or something like that, that that actually incentivizes to a different level? The type of development that would be, you know, transit oriented development, for example. Um, so that's kind of a question. Does it have to sort of blanket anything in R one or whatever have to be? These are the standards, or can we geographically or otherwise define those parameters? And then the other question is having to do with um, do we have to treat special area zones differently uh, for design standards? Do they already, is that built in to the process? Or could we just start from a, a new place and just say, with regards to this process, we don't recognize special area zones having, um, you know, a special set of circumstances that would apply to them?
So let me try to answer those questions. I think to the first question, the answer is yes, we can look at things differently. We could look at um, sort of further incentivizing some of the standards or um, further relaxing, say, parking standards in areas in proximity to transit. Um, as long as we don't, you know, as long as we're not more restrictive than what the administrative rules say, we can be less restrictive and that could vary by um, location. So that's kind of the short answer to that. Um, in terms of kind of design standards and special area zones, I think what we said here in terms of outside special area zones, we said that because um, within special area zones, there is a lot of variation in terms of what design standards are applied. And we are identifying some pretty specific issues that we're going to need to look at within those special area zones to ensure compliance um, with the state administrative rules. Um, Um with the state administrative rules. Um and so we could um take. Yes, I mean, we could take pretty much an across the board approach to which design standards are required. Um whether it's the base zones or the special area zones. I think I'm not misspeaking when I say that. I'm looking at Terry to. So yeah, she's nodding her head that the up and down direction. Um yeah, so yes, that is something we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Uh Commissioner Brofsky.
Uh you're muted again, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Edwards' comment made me think of something. As far as we have, we have one zone that's kind of unique when it comes to design standards, and that's the walnut mixed use zone. Where it's a form based design code that says if you fit this form, you can build it. How would that be affected by this? I mean, because it's different than than other zones.
So we're still going to need to look at um whether or not you're applying specific kind of architectural design standards. In that area and whether those are consistent with the administrative rules. Um, you know, and we have started to look at that zone and others. My recollection, I don't have it kind of in front of me. Um but was that so far, we're not seeing a ton of issues in terms of the standards applied in that zone. You know, the things that um a lot of the the form within the form based code relates to things like setbacks, heights. Step backs. Um and there my kind of recollection, I actually helped out with that. Zone, but it's been a long time. But my recollection is there's not a ton of detailed architectural design standards applied through that zone. So even though, yes, it's a form based code, what we need to look at here are in terms of design standards. Are are you applying really specific architectural design standards in some of these zones? And so that's a thing we'll look at in that zone as well as others. Um and um. I can kind of look back at what we found so far, but but yeah, I mean, the short answer is we will need to look at that. Um and so far, I don't think we're seeing a ton of things that are, we've highlighted as, oh yeah, these things all have to change there.
Hey, Commissioner Edwards.
Sorry, me again. Um so are you wanting us to actually answer these questions for you at this point? Would that be helpful?
We're we're not really looking necessarily for you to answer these questions, or or at least we're not looking for you. I should, let me rephrase that. We're not looking for a recommend, a group recommendation on these questions. Um but if you have thoughts on these questions, and if you have thoughts on sort of what I'm describing is the approach that we're going to take, we'd love to get your thoughts.
So I'll share my a thought um on on this first bullet here. I touched on it already. I definitely fall in the category of strongly encouraging to leaning towards incentivizing. But I do see that there is potentially a need for a distinction. When it comes to incentivizing types of development that would just be blanket throughout the community. So for example, as somebody who spends my day, you know, immersed in transit. I I do understand that it is not something that um, you know, if you have development that is transit oriented. Or it is really um very compatible with transit, it wouldn't, it would not. Behoove us to establish um a situation where you have, you know. Large multifamily developments happening where there's no access. And so we've said, hey, we'll ease up on your parking restrictions, but by the way, you're on a, you know, in a transit island. You're Delta, North Delta Highway or something like that, right? So I do see that there maybe is consideration to um thinking about the types of development. That are, you know, missing middle development and where um other, where it intersects with other things. Such as our transportation infrastructure, transit, other types of things that, you know, we should maybe be thinking about. If we want are wanting to encourage it that, you know, into a to specific locations. I think there are ways to do that. And um but then certainly, my personal opinion, we should absolutely be encouraging development. You know, for it to to happen as 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 it will. Um but I'd like to see incentives built into. Areas that are served uh well through transit and transportation and and all that other stuff. So my two cents on that.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Fragola.
Thank you. Um so in terms of approaches, I I am going to really appreciate the packages. That you're describing because of the interconnectedness between so many of these options. And as someone who doesn't have expertise in many of those things, I think that will be really helpful.
Awesome, thank you.
I I'd like to jump in. Um. I I'm leaning strongly towards incentivize. I'm going to be careful with the labels. I think when we get into this, it's going to become rather complex. I think over the next couple of months, we're going to be, we're going to be working to put this together in detail. But I think in general, that's where I go. I I spent a little time going back to the goals like I'd like to do. And looked at back in uh in terms of the compliance with HB two thousand one. And increasing the housing choice, increasing supply, promoting equity. I we're hearing that kind of thing strongly from the panel. We're hearing that from the survey results. Um all of that, I feel, really kind of supports that. I think the idea of promoting housing availability, promoting diversity of housing. All of those things. So when I kind of go through this group of questions or that you're kind of looking for. You know, what our leaning is, I I tend to, I guess, be into that camp that we're, we should do our best to um. Go beyond, I guess, go beyond the basic rules or the basic rule requirements. And do uh what we can within the context of Eugene and uh some of the other things we're looking at. But to enable the the development of uh middle housing across the uh community. So I'd offer that.
All right, thank you. Okay, should I bump to the next slide here? Alright, so kind of another key question in terms of, um this is a kind of a fairly specific one. Um but it's where we're talking about plexes, so duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, or fourplexes. Um one of the options you have is to define those as attached units. Or to define them as either attached or detached units. And so, you know, if you want to think about this from sort of a pure, I think, flexibility standpoint or providing more options. Then we could think of the allow option as just permitting those as attached units. And the encourage is allowing for either one, attached or detached. I think for us, again, from sort of a pure flexibility standpoint, you know, allowing either choice or option for. Um property owners and developers is is kind of the more flexible option. We want to dig into as part of um these code amendments. How um how real is that? How meaningful a choice is that? Or do we actually expect a lot of people to kind of take that detached option or use that detached option? How much benefit is there to that? So I think that's just a question for us to be contemplating as we go through this. Um so I just wanted to put that out there. And again, you know, if you have any thoughts on this one, uh we're we're all ears again.
Uh Commissioner Brofsky.
Thanks. You know, for me, the the economics of a duplex always came down to. The fact that you had shared infrastructure, you had shared roofings, shared walls that made the bill price cheaper. You know, um that's, if you're putting two, I mean, I I don't mind saying, yeah, you can do it. But realistically, the economy of scale of building two small, basically, single family houses. As opposed to a duplex where you're sharing uh the roof line, the the, you know. Possibly shared walls, possibly shared garage walls, those types of things. It seems to me that that's going to be the ones that will pencil out more so than doing this small. Uh two small houses on a lot. I think that the two small houses on a lot might be attractive, but I think they'll be higher end. Price point type of places. So whether that gets us to the, what we're looking for. More affordable, again, not capital A, capital H, but more affordable housing. I think the attached ones probably pencil out, and I would have to talk to a developer about that.
Yeah, I think this is um an item where we do want to have some discussions with some builders and developers as part of this process. And see if we can kind of get a little more info on that. So, but thank you.
Yeah, I've got Commissioner Fragola.
Yeah, I just was wondering, once they're not attached anymore, I mean, don't they become a cottage? I mean, don't we kind of move into another housing type? I I I'm absolutely um supportive of the of flex. In having increased flexibility options, but um I was thinking similarly to Commissioner Brofsky. That I I feel like it would be really helpful to hear from some developers on this piece.
Great. And I would say in terms of your question about do they then become a cottage, kind of yes and no, or not necessarily. Um because cottage clusters are defined in a fairly specific way. One way in which they're defined is that they share a common. Or they're oriented around a common courtyard or open space. Um and you can sort of choose to define them in terms of a certain number of cottages on a lot. Um or their individual lots. We'll we'll talk about that one in a minute, too. Um so not necessarily, if they're not or oriented around a common um shared open space. Then they would not automatically be defined as or meet that definition of cottage clusters. But um yeah, kind of point taken. There is been some potential overlap between some of these different types of middle housing that we're talking about, for sure.
Commissioner Islington.
Um I was just gonna say that it I it would be really great to to hear Commissioner Taylor's um uh be honest, given that she's uh could be helping design some of these things. And see what's the drawbacks that she's seen from her clients. So maybe we can revisit next time uh we have a session and get her thoughts on it.
I've got a couple of quick thoughts on it. I I I guess I'm with Commissioner Brofsky, Commissioner Fragola. I mean, I think flexibility sounds good. My understanding, going back and looking at the material we've seen from you guys. Uh going to the individual units is a bit more complicated. Uh so in terms of barriers, I think we want to be a little careful there. I also think in terms of middle housing, the idea of uh limiting scale and bulk, which we see throughout all of this. Uh you know, the idea of two houses on one lot, and not only is it, uh as Commissioner Brofsky said, I think it could tend to be more expensive. Uh kind of defeats, I think, the idea of the middle housing, the affordable units and so on. So I'm I'm I'm, and we certainly want to hear from builders. Uh we do, we want to hear another perspective. But I'm kind of leaning towards not doing this.
Okay, thank you.
I think you can go on or. Oh, I got Commissioner Edwards.
Start really quick. I just want to say, I mean, I'd like to see us allow it and let the market sort it out, I guess. Um but again, I I echo my colleagues that I do think it is important to hear from the folks that would be building these. As to what would be feasible. Um and it, would it be necessary to allow such flexibility? But I I'm leaning towards allowing the flexibility of either type um without further understanding, so.
Got it. All right, thank you. Okay, so next one. Um and this is, this is kind of an important, particularly important question in terms of the actual, the code writing. Um it's an important question in other ways, too. Um but one of the kind of key questions for us in terms of the code writing. Has to do with cottage clusters and whether or not um the individual cottages. Um well, actually, let me back up, whether or not um these would be defined as all of the individual cottages being on a single lot. One shared lot versus um them each being, each cottage being on an individual lot. For that cottage, the open space portions would then be on some kind of shared lot. Um or allow either one. Um the um and so just kind of a couple of things on this. Um allowing them on their own lots um is, does make it easier for that fee simple ownership. Um option. Um as opposed to having them be all on one lot. Then essentially, you're going to have some kind of likely condominiumization, condominiumization um approach. Can never say that word. Um in terms of that code writing, um speaking, you know, sort of from selfishly. From that perspective, um the model code just includes provisions for cottages all on one lot. And that was because it's a lot of additional work to come up with a set of standards. Um uh where they are on individual lots. Now, having said that, you all have some code provisions that could potentially be adapted. Um you're, um I'm going to get the name wrong, but Jeff will correct me if I do that cluster. Cluster, not subdivision, but you you have a set of standards that we might be able to modify, but it's still going to be some work. So there are just a bunch of other code issues associated with this. Um so it's just a bigger lift if um you want to go that route. Um and we don't sort of absolutely know what the benefits are um either way, but we know what some of them are. So I'm just sort of putting that out there as one of the things um we need to figure out. And then we talked earlier a little bit about the special area zones. Um and so um. Couple of things I'm going to say about this. We asked about what's the preferred approach for updating special area zones. Um one, we really cannot exempt those from the middle housing requirements. They meet the definition of the types of zones that are going to be subject to the middle housing requirements, so we need to look at them. One option is to essentially update them just to address the minimum compliance standards. Um another option would be to update them further to move towards the encourage or incentivize options. Um another kind of sub option, I would say, is to um look at some of the barriers that were identified in the code audit. That was done for the city that we helped with um about a year and a half ago, um because there were some barriers that were identified. Particularly in those special area zones, and um we could be taking a look at some of those things as part of this. And then the last thing I'll just note is that we have started to look at which of these special area zones. Um have issues in terms of they include standards that are not in compliance with um the state administrative rules. And Jeffers, the Jefferson sub area or special area is the one that has frankly, the most problems in terms of just standards. That um we are going to have to take a look at that don't currently comply with the um the O A Rs. So um I'll stop there and just see if there's any thoughts on these couple of questions.
Okay, before I go to Commissioner Brofsky and Commissioner Edwards, I Lauren Summers has her hand up.
You, Commissioner Beeson, I just wanted to add a little bit of information to Matt's presentation on the, especially on the question of. Um whether or not the city wants to allow cottages on individual lots. And I can't remember if we've talked about this at Planning Commission previously, but there is a bill in the Oregon Legislature right now. That would require cities to allow land divisions for all middle housing types, including cottage clusters. It hasn't passed yet. It's still kind of in the process of working its way through. Uh but if it does, then we would be in a position. To have to allow cottages on individual lots. So staff will certainly keep you updated on what's going on with that bill, but just. Have to allow cottages on individual lots. So staff will certainly keep you updated on what's going on with that bill, but just kind of by way of background information. That may be part of the consideration as well.
Okay, thank you. I've got Commissioners Borowski, Edwards, and Fraguilla in that order. Commissioner Borowski.
Thank you, and I even unmuted myself. I would definitely encourage allowing. Cottages on individual lots. I think that. Not only cottages, townhouses, duplexes, being able to have it so that the people who want to buy these homes. Can buy their share half of the home. And and start building equity like we heard from ISIS, you know, it's like. If you can't get into these and do it, I think that's that's something that we heard from the developers. Saying that fee simple is is necessary to do it, because if it's in condominium mode. They're not gonna do it because of the tenure liability that they have to go on. And then you've got homeowners fees, so I'm definitely in. In favor of that, not just on cottage clusters, but across the board. Figuring out a way to do that, you know, one of the barriers on on some of the other ones is you have to have X, you know. Frontage access to be able to split a lot. If we can figure out a way to do it so that you don't have to do that, I would definitely encourage that. Making it mandatory, I don't think is necessary, because I think there may be developers that would like to have a little. Community so, but being able to allow it, I think is definitely something that I would be pushing for.
Commissioner Edwards.
So I would actually echo everything that Commissioner Borowski just said, so I won't spend any more time in repeating that. Um, on the on item G, I. Personal opinion is that I I would need to be convinced that these special areas merit. Being treated differently when it comes to this legislation, because I don't see why. We would treat a neighborhood differently um with regards to allowing different types of housing. So I would. Certainly be open to listening to that, but I I really feel strongly that I feel like this. That that these policies should apply across the board. Um, and I as I mentioned earlier, I mean, I I could see areas where. If it was in proximity to transit or something like that, that there would be additional incentives that we could potentially look at, but I. Don't see a reason why we would treat um any of our special area zones differently with respect to um what's allowed citywide.
Commissioner Fraguilla.
And I also echo what both Commissioner Edwards and Commissioner Borowski say. I'm I'm very much in support of allowing. Um, of encouraging and allowing both single lot and individual lot development. I think we should figure it out, not. Only for the cottage clusters, but for as many housing types as we can. We've heard. Over and over again from stakeholders and roundtables and the Democracy Panel that. The economic opportunity to, you know, become part of. Uh, the homeowners club is is really important and we want to. Um, reduce barriers to that. I and I also, I I feel the same way about the special area zones. I don't. Understand um why we would do something different for them. I'm open to hearing about why we would do something different, but. I I I'm assuming that we're gonna want to apply the same. Code development to many of these special area zones unless there's a very significant reason why. Um, I do really appreciate you connecting this conversation to the barriers that were identified in the code audit. Particularly in the special area zone. So. Yeah, I think I'm in the same place as Commissioner Edwards on that.
I've got a couple of quick thoughts. I think I follow. The other commissioners in terms of cottage cluster and breaking into individual lots, I'm supportive generally of what I think I heard. Uh, in terms of the special area zones and I I. I don't want to be contrary, or I want to be careful being contrary. I my. I I guess my understanding on this at a at a fundamental level is that the. New regulations and the statute requires us to allow middle housing on residential lots across the city. And uh there is are some constraints on some of the uh higher level. Types, um but in general, we are required to allow it where. Single-family dwelling units are currently allowed. So when I was thinking of this question in special area zones, I didn't go back and start looking at them, and I know we've got thirteen or fourteen and they get pretty detailed. I I was kind of assuming that what we would do is we'd want to be sure that they. A allow it at the at the minimal level, consistent with the statute and consistent with the OAR. And then beyond that, in terms of saying we wouldn't do anything different, um. I guess I I think we certainly can't do anything different that provides any kind of constraints in violation of. The standards or the rules, but to the extent they're doing something different that doesn't do that, I. I guess I just sort of need to, it starts to get complicated and I'd want to understand. The specifics of each area zone and what the questions were, so.
All right.
That's my thought.
Yeah, and I'd say you're right in terms of what we do need to do at a minimum. We do need to make sure that those forms of housing are allowed in those areas. We do need to make sure that any other standards, design standards, particularly that are currently applied in those areas are not in conflict with. Or out of compliance with the administrative rules. And I think the question is. Um, that we're trying to pose is do we want to go beyond that in terms of further changes to some of the special area zone? Standards, particularly looking at some of the things that were identified as barriers, even if they're not necessarily directly in conflict with the administrative rules. So I think that was kind of the question we were posing on that. And I just say also appreciate the comments on cottage clusters. I heard pretty unanimous um opinions on that one. The one thing I would note is that. The legislation and the administrative rules do define duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes in a certain way, and they define them as two units on a lot. Or three units on a lot or four units on a lot. And so I think we're gonna have to be consistent with that. It doesn't mean that you can't. After they're developed, allow for the lots to be partitioned or divided, and that's essentially what I think that legislation that Lauren talked about a moment ago. Um, would we potentially require you to do um in the future? So that would be a path to getting there, but in terms of how the code. Defines those housing types, um we do need to pay attention to, you know, what the state rules say in terms of how we define them in the code. So. That's it.
Okay, I think.
I understand the desire and the and kind of what people want to see happen, so.
We're just about out of time. I think Commissioner Fraguilla is gonna get the final word, and then we'll see if Alyssa's got anything for us.
I we're gonna revisit this. I can hold my question for another time.
Okay, well, we've got three minutes, so.
And I have one more slide if you don't mind.
Oh, okay, no, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll just wrap up with next step. So um as we mentioned at the beginning, we're going to complete and share the survey report. So completely analyze and um package up those survey report, survey results for you. We are starting to plan our April outreach, and this discussion tonight has helped me think through what questions we should be asking of our consultants. And how we are thinking about um different incentive options. So thank you for the very rich discussion tonight. We'll be back April thirteenth and April twenty-sixth with different parts of code recommendations. And then for a complete, hopefully, the package um on mail. And I've already mentioned the other two things. So that's it. Thank you so much.
And I'm gonna jump off this call and teleport myself to a meeting in Happy Valley that I'm also in tonight, so. Thanks for listening to me and your patience, and I'll see you later. See you again soon.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt. Okay, Alyssa.
I just have a couple of things that I'll run through really quickly. Um, just a reminder that planning commission, actually, boards and commissions recruitment closes on Friday, so this Friday, the twelfth. Um, so if you were working on trying to get somebody to apply, please uh continue to do so. We do have ten ten applicants at this point. I don't have any more information than that. But you know, the bigger the pool, the better. So just reminder about that. And then your next meeting is March twenty-second. It will be on River Road, Santa Clara, um an update on that project. And then we I sent out a poll or Linda sent out a poll maybe last week about we're trying to get another meeting, and so it looks like um March twenty-ninth is gonna be the best day for that. It's a daytime meeting. I will send this out to you, but um. That will be deliberations for the Metro Plan that had the open record that you just talked about. From the last couple of weeks, and then um we're trying to also add a work session on housing tools and strategies, so you can see. A similar presentation that the folks um on that team are gonna be giving to council on Wednesday. And then just uh Commissioner Remy testified last night at the public hearing on Clear and Objective, and that went really well. So Janessa gave a work session at five thirty, and then there was a very short hearing at about nine fifty-five P M. Um, and that went really well, so we're looking forward to, I think, action for that is scheduled April twelfth, and I heard a lot of appreciation for your hard work. Boy, I know. Before I before Borowski asks, yes, we're still working on getting a retreat. Uh, the problem is the the last dates we sent out to you, we couldn't get all seven of you at any of those dates, so we're having to try to find some. And those were the dates that worked for us, so we're having to move some things around to be able to suggest more dates, so. Hopeful to have a new poll out to you within the next.